We ask that you stand for the pledge allegiance to the American flag and remain standing for our invocation given tonight by Councilor Striplin.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Shall we pray? Dear only Father, we thank you for the gift and the beauty of this day that you've allowed us to be a part of. We're certainly mindful of all the events that are going on in various parts of the world. We ask your hand and guidance, guard and direct all those involved. Be with us tonight as we do the business of the city, for we ask these things in thy most holy name. Amen.
Amen. Madam Clerk, may you call the robe, please.
Councilor Striplin.
Here.
Councilor Wood.
Here.
Councilor Brown.
Here.
Councilor Starnes.
Here.
Councilor Chambliss.
Here.
Councilor Bowles.
Here.
Councilor Boone.
Here.
I call this meeting to order. The character trait of a man is endurance, the inward strength to withstand stress, and to do my best. A good character trait, and I know we all trying to do our best. We have approval of the minutes from the public hearing and city council meeting June 3, 2014. Do we have a motion to approve?
Stand by.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second on those minutes. All in favor of approval of those minutes signify by raising your right hand, and those minutes have been approved. At this time, we have comments from anyone regarding tonight's agenda items. Any item on tonight's agenda, please raise your hand and come forward. Mayor, you have a report?
Yes, sir. Certainly do, and just like to start off saying thank you. I know most of you have visited our farmer's market in its new location, which has been referred to as a grove now, and I'd just like to say thank you to everybody who had a hand in making this thing happen. I think it's been very much a success since all of our growers have sold out of their supplies over the last two weeks, and I want to thank John Willoughby from the Alabama's Farmers Market Authority for his guidance and hard work in helping us take over management of this part of, I guess, southern culture when you start talking about a farmer's market. There's very few communities around here that do not have one. I think it's definitely been a success. But I also need to thank special events, cultural arts, and marketing coordinator Barbara Simpson for leading this effort. She was building a relationship with our growers and made it a success with the growers in our community. This coming Saturday, we will have Wayne Creek's five-star chef, Paul Norton, on site cooking with some of his, showing off some of his culinary skills there, so I hope everybody's there for that. But we've also heard he's in Guinness World Records. If you missed, if you missed my infamous oatmeal pancakes last Saturday, then you won't want to miss this coming week with him. We announced Wednesday we're having a Creek Walk concert series this summer. This series developed out of multiple conversations with the Chamber, hotel owners, and many others, and Tuesday nights have been shown that those are the busiest nights for the hotels in Prattville, and their clientele have been wanting someplace to visit, shop, eat. Things are unique to our great city, and this is just another way in us to help and promote not only downtown but all of Prattville. And the two efforts that have really brought this series together, I just want to say thank you on all that. The first concert will be Tuesday night. It will feature the Goat Hill String Band. Need to thank Greg Duke, he's a former museum director, who's actually helped pull, like I say, so much of this together. Several different sponsors that are listed here, probably are Chamber of Commerce, LEC Technology Group, Jackson Thornton, Canuckins, Kimbok Photography, Riverside Church, Prattville Downtown Unlimited. We expect there to be a few more sponsors in the coming weeks. Because of these sponsors, these concerts are free to the public, and I hope everybody will find time to come down, enjoy, and just see again what all the different amenities we have downtown. On tonight's agenda, item number one, just want to ask you guys to table this item. Demolition has begun on that, on that project. This is one that's been held over from our previous council meeting. Work has begun, but all of it has not been cleaned up on. That's our regular agenda item. Agenda item number four, please move forward on that one so we can, that is part of our Heritage Park Fountain that needs to be refurbished. We have, I don't know if there's going to be a report from our Parks and Recs Director, I mean, committee person on that or not, but this is something that we were going to have in this year's budget, but whenever we were crafting the budget, we decided to try to wait and hold off one more year, but the fountain itself has aged a lot quicker than we initially thought, and we have been able to pull the funds together with y'all's approval on that. We can start the renovations on this. On resolution number five, it's a last-minute housekeeping item acknowledging the ADM award for the Field of Dreams surface and submitting that amendment to ADEC in order for the YMCA to proceed on the CDBG grant project. On a side note, we hope everyone will join us tomorrow at the YMCA for the groundbreaking of this great project that will benefit our community in so, so many ways. Resolution number six, this resolution allows us to apply for ADEC grant money also to support a school relations officer along with a vehicle for this position. This is supported by educators of Attica County, and I ask you to please move forward on this also. Resolution number seven, that would allow, authorize us to refinance some of our bonds, realizing a significant cost savings over the life of these warrants. Please move forward on this item also. I think just a way for us to show everybody how financial responsible we are, because this is one of many that hopefully be able to refinance in, over the next several years that will actually show a large savings to this community. With that said, Mr. President, that's the end of my report.
Thank you, Mayor. Does anyone have any questions, comments for the mayor?
Thank you.
At this time, we have reports from the council and special committees. Councilor Striplin?
Yes, sir.
Councilor Brown?
No, sir.
Councilor Starnes?
No, sir.
Councilor Chambliss?
No, sir.
Councilor Bowles?
No, sir.
Councilor Boone?
Yes, sir. In reference to item number four that the mayor was just speaking on, the Parks and Recs Department has been working closely with Mr. Joel Duke and several other departments, and it is time to refurbish the fountain. And we believe that the fountain is very much representative of us as the fountain city in with all of the recent events and focus on our downtown, lots of film footage, lots of pictures being taken, lots of downtown events in the summertime. We do want to focus on our fountain and keeping it up to date and refurbished, so I do urge you to move ahead with this item at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Boone. With that, we have a report on the status of the city finance from our finance director.
Everyone should have a financial packet in front of you. The first sheet in that packet is the revenue report for the month of May. You will see that total revenue is up by $159,000 year-to-date, and that's .67%. As I mentioned the last time I gave the report, we did have a couple of things that came in lower this year than last year. One of those is the Alabama Trust Fund money that we get, and also we have lodging fees this year where we didn't have lodging fees in last year. If you factor those two in, we're actually up just over 2%, so it's, we're actually up a lot more than it kind of shows in this report. But everything is running right on trend. As you'll see, our total percent of budget that we have received this, so far this year is 70.67%, and as far as our revenue is concerned, we're only 58.33% through the year, so that's, that's very positive. The next report in your packet is the monthly tax breakdown comparison for the month of May. You will see that everything is running positive. Couple of things are down, but not significantly. Everything is kind of running right on track. The next report in the packet is going to be the expense report for the month of May. As far as their expenses are concerned, we're 66.67% through the year. Everybody's running right in line where they should be. At the end of the report, you will notice, as I said before, we're 66% through the year, but we've only spent 65% of our budget. So we've received more revenue than we had budgeted at this point, and we've spent less at this point than we had budgeted. So that's both very positive. The next sheet in your packet is going to be the wastewater enterprise fund income statement. You will see year-to-date, that fund has brought in $90,000 more than they have spent, and they are also right on track as far as their revenues and expenses are concerned. The next sheet in the packet is the sanitation enterprise fund income statement. Again, year-to-date, they have brought, they actually brought in $191,000 less than they have spent. That's just because of their accruals on their reports. They usually run a little bit tighter as far as their income statement is concerned. The next report is the judicial special revenue fund income statement. You will see on theirs, they have brought in $5,472.23 less than they have spent, but you also see down at the bottom, there's $38,000 in suspense accounts that haven't been divvied out yet. A good portion of that will be revenue, so that will adjust back. The next sheet in your packet is going to be the bank account balances report. You will see the total of all city cash accounts at the end of May 2013 is $15,957,301.39. You will notice a couple of changes for the month of May. The general fund reserve, we moved money out of the general fund over to the general fund reserve. That account is now just over $2 million in general fund reserve. Previously, we moved about $1.3 million over to that account. We also increased the industrial part development fund account to $500,000. Just pulling some of the money out of the general fund to put it in some of these pockets to help it grow, and kind of like little savings accounts for the city. The next sheet in your packet, which is the last sheet, is the May Council AP report that shows the balance of all city debt, including accounts payable, is, at the end of May, was $47,455,545.26. So it's a significance decrease over the last couple of years. That's it.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions or comments? Councilor Chambliss?
Doug, on the debt reserve fund, we ask you this a lot, and maybe we don't ask quite as much now, but just wanted to make sure there's no issues there, cash flow issues. We're still way ahead of our debt service and no...
We're still way ahead. Yes, sir. We, we've made the debt payment for the month of, that was due the month of beginning of May, and so the next payment is due in November, and we already have enough to cover that.
Right.
And in fact, I know I had mentioned this before in my, one of my earlier reports about the 2007 bond issue is coming up to be called, or callable, in November, this coming November, and that's actually the one that we're looking at refunding. But the interesting thing is there's actually more than 10 million available, you know, left over in that bond. And so I had discussed with the mayor and discussed with the finance committee that we refund, which is on the agenda tonight, starting the process to refund the 2007 bond issue as much as we can, tax-exempt, bank-qualified, and then in November, go ahead and call the rest of it, which will be about a million and a half, and pay for that outright. So that would take, wipe that off of the city's debt balance.
And by then, we will accrued enough to do both of those?
Easily. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Does anyone else have any questions or comment for Ms. Mosley? Before I get into agenda, I would like to announce that tonight, at the end of our agenda, the council will be going into executive session and have a letter from the city attorneys authorizing, in its opinion, that all is legal discussing matters of trade and commerce. We will be going into executive session. Right now, we have a consent agenda. We have four items on the consent agenda. Number one is the resolution to declare various weed license to be of public nuisance and order their payment per Title XI, Chapter 67 of the Code of Alabama, 1975, as amended. Number two is a resolution to set a public hearing to declare various weed license to be of public nuisance and order their payment per Title XI, Chapter 67 of the Code of Alabama, 1975, as amended. Number three is a resolution to grant a retail bill licensed off premises only and retail table wine license off premises only to J. Menave Marketing LLC doing business as Purple Cow, 108. Number four is a resolution to grant an extension to Carroll and Golson for the de-dapidated structure located at 923 River Forest Avenue. We have these four items to consider. Do we have a motion to place these items on a consent agenda? We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor placing these items on a consent agenda signify by raising your right hand. These four items are on the consent agenda. Would be any discussion on any of these four items listed? We have a motion to adopt these items?
Stand by.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on these items? All in favor signify by raising your right hand. And the consent agenda has been adopted. Our regular agenda, resolution number one was held from June 3, 2014. Would there be any discussion on this resolution? Councilor Bowles?
I would like to ask that we hold this for a month, or, well, I don't want to table it yet because there's still piles of trash everywhere, and if we hold it, if we table, I'm afraid he don't clean it up, then we're stuck going through everything again. If we could simply hold it one more time, I think in another two weeks, it'll be clean.
Can we get a motion on the floor?
I'd make a motion, we hold it for two more weeks.
We have a motion on the floor to hold this item for two weeks. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Be any discussion on this item now. All in favor of holding for two weeks signify by raising your right hand, and this item is held for two weeks. Number two is a warrant bid, number 014008, to Pyrotechnico for the July 4 fireworks display at a cost of $17,500. Councilor Boone, will you read it, please?
Yes, sir. Whereas the City of Prattville sponsors the July 4 fireworks display on an annual basis, and whereas due to the cost of the event, the City of Prattville had a need to bid the July 4 fireworks display, and whereas four bids were let for the Performing and Creative Arts Department for the July 4, 2014 fireworks display, whereas one sealed bid was received and Pyrotechnico was the lowest responsible bidder with a cost of $17,500 for the event. Whereas said 4th of July fireworks display is a budgeted expense for the Performing and Creative Arts Department. Now therefore be it resolved that the city council of the City of Prattville hereby awards bid number 014-008 in the amount of $17,500 to Pyrotechnico for the July 4, 2014 fireworks display, and said funds are approved and appropriated from the FY 2014 Budget Line Item Performing and Creative Arts Department Independent State Parade fireworks. So move, Mr. President.
We have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Would be any discussion on this item. All in favor of adoption signify by raising your right hand, and this item is adopted. Resolution number three is to authorize the release of funds for one generator and one transfer switch from Blossom Propane Gas and Appliance for the Fire Department at a cost not to exceed $13,900. Councilor Bowles, will you read it, please?
Yes, sir. Whereas the City of Prattville Fire Department has identified a need to replace a three-phase natural gas generator and transfer switch at Fire Station Number One, and whereas the generator and transfer switch are available from Blossom Propane Gas and Appliance at a cost not to exceed $13,900, whereas said purchase is budgeted expense of the Fire Department. Now therefore be it approved by the city council of the City of Prattville that said funds in the amount not to exceed $13,900 are hereby authorized and approved to be paid to Blossom Propane Gas and Appliance, and said funds are approved and appropriated from the 2014 Budget Line Item Fire Department capital outlay. So move.
We have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Will it be any discussion on this item? All in favor signify by raising your right hand, and this item is adopted. Item number four is a resolution to release funds to refurbish the Heritage Park Fountain for the Parks and Recreation Department by Robinson Iron Corporation at a cost not to exceed $20,000. Councilor Boone, will you read it, please?
Yes, sir. Whereas the City of Prattville has identified a need to refurbish the Heritage Park Fountain, and whereas Robinson Iron Corporation constructed the fountain when it was donated to the city from the Musgrove family, and whereas Robinson Iron has the expertise to refurbish the Heritage Park Fountain at a cost not to exceed $20,000, and whereas budgeted funds are available to refurbish the Heritage Park Fountain, therefore be it resolved by the city council of the City of Prattville that said funds in an amount not to exceed $20,000 are hereby authorized and approved to be paid to Robinson Iron Corporation to refurbish the Heritage Park Fountain, and funds are approved and appropriated from FY 2014 Budget Line Item Capital Projects/Misslanious Contract Services. So move, Mr. President.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Would be any discussion on this item. All in favor signify by raising your right hand, and this item is adopted. Item number five is a resolution to accept a $250,000 grant from the ADM Scrap Tire Fund and to authorize the mayor to submit a formal amendment request to ADEC of CDBG project number LR-CE-PF-13-008 for the Field of Dreams project. Councilor Striplin, will you read it, please?
Yes, sir. Whereas the City of Prattville has been awarded a CDBG grant, project number LR-CE-PF-13-008 from ADEC in the amount of $250,000 for the purpose of constructing an ADA-compliant baseball field of dreams, and whereas the original CDBG project was for a 140-foot field, although the city and the YMCA desired to make a 180-foot field in order to maximize the field's utility, and whereas the City of Prattville has received additional funding in the amount of $250,000 from the Alabama Department of Environmental Management Scrap Tire Program for the field's surface, which will increase the budget and allow for the construction of the larger field, and whereas changes to the grant scope and budget of this magnitude require a formal project amendment to be requested from ADEC. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council, the Prattville City Council as follows. Section 1, that the City of Prattville accepts the $250,000 grant from the ADM Scrap Tire Fund for the field's surface. Section 2, that the City of Prattville submits a request for a formal amendment to CDBG project LR-CE-PF-13-008 to ADEC for the purpose of constructing a larger field and increasing all line items of the budget per the attached cost estimate and revised budget. Section 3, that Bill Gillespie Jr., in his capacity as mayor, is hereby authorized and directed to submit said request to ADEC, and to take such other steps as may be required to implement and amend as proposed. So move, Mr. President.
We have a motion on the floor on resolution five. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Would it be any discussion on this item? All in favor signify by raising your right hand, and this item is adopted. Item number six is a resolution to authorize the mayor to make application to the Alabama Department of Economic and Community Affairs, ADEC for grant funds for a school relations officer training and a their school relations vehicle with a match not to exceed $23,000. Councilor Starnes, will you read it, please?
Yes, sir. Whereas the state of Alabama, through the Alabama Department of Economic and Community Affairs, Law Enforcement, Traffic Safety Division, under the Omnibus Crime Control and Safe Streets Act of 1968, PL-90-351 as amended, and other appropriate federal authorizations, is offering financial aid to combat rising crime, improve the criminal justice system, assist victims of crime, and assist in the problems of juvenile justice, and whereas the city council of the City of Prattville is of the opinion that it would be beneficial to make application for such assistance, and whereas the city council of the City of Prattville agrees to be accountable for providing the match required toward the total cost of said project in amount not to exceed $23,000 to be budgeted from fiscal year 2015 Budget Line Item Police Department Grant Matching Funds. Now therefore be resolved that the city council of the City of Prattville does hereby authorize and empower the mayor of the City of Prattville to make application to the Alabama Department of Economic and Community Affairs, Law Enforcement, Traffic Safety Division for said financial assistance. So move, Mr. President.
We have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Would it be any discussion on this item? All in favor signify by raising your right hand, and this item is adopted. Item number seven is to authorize certain actions with respect to general obligation refund and warrant, Series 2014-A of the City of Prattville. Councilor Brown, will you read it, please?
Yes, sir. To authorize certain actions with respect to general obligation refunding warrants, Series 2014-A of the City of Prattville. So move, Mr. President.
We have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Would it be any discussion on this item? All in favor signify by raising your right hand, and this item is adopted. Item number eight is an ordinance to exempt certain covered items from municipal sales and use tax during the first full weekend of August 2014 as authorized by Act 2006-574, generally referred to as the Back-to-School Sales Tax Holiday Legislation. Councilor Striplin, will you read it, please?
Yes, sir. Be it ordained by the city council of the City of Prattville, Alabama, as follows. Section 1, in conformity with the provisions Sales Tax Holiday Rule 810-6-3-65 in paragraph 11-51-210E, Code of Alabama, 1975, as amended, enacted by the Alabama Legislature during the 2006 regular session, providing for a state sales tax holiday, the City of Prattville, Alabama exempts covered items from municipal sales and use tax during the same period, beginning at 12:01 a.m. on the first Friday in August, August 1, 2014, and ending at 12:00 midnight the following Sunday, August 3, 2014. Section 2, this ordinance shall be subject to all terms, conditions, definitions, time periods, and rules as provided by Sales Tax Holiday Rule 810-6-3-65 in paragraph 1151-210E, Code of Alabama, 1975, as amended, except that the time period shall only be as specified in section 1 above and not for all years thereafter. Section 3, the city clerk is hereby authorized and directed to certify a copy of this ordinance under the seal of the City of Prattville, Alabama, and to forward with certified copy to the Alabama Department of Revenue to be recorded and posted on the department's website. Section 4, this ordinance shall become effective upon its passage and publication as required by law. So move, Mr. President.
We have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. In order for this ordinance to be hurried tonight, rules must be suspended. We have a motion to suspend the rules?
So move.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor of suspending the rules signify by raising your right hand. Rules are now suspended. This item is now open for discussion, all in favor... This item is open for discussion. All in favor... All want... Ooh, tongue twisted. All in favor of adoption of this ordinance? Do we have a motion to adopt this ordinance?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Now this item is open for discussion. Any discussion? All in favor signify by raising your right hand. All in favor, signified by raising the right hand? This ordinance has been adopted. Number nine is an ordinance also, surplus equipment from the police department. Councilor Sterns, will you read it, please?
Yes, sir. Be ordained by the city council of the city of Prattville, Alabama as follows, that the equipment listed below is hereby declared surplus for the police department and is to be removed from the inventory of said department. Wayland Light Bar Model SX8BBBB, serial number 58277. Wayland Light Bar Model SX8BBRR, serial number 65069. Wayland Light Bar Model SW8RRBB, serial number 115251. Be it further ordained that the city council instructs the mayor to sell the said equipment on govdeals.com and the proceeds be deposited to the general fund. So move, Mr. President.
We have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. This item also must have the rules suspended. Do we have a motion to suspend the rules? All in favor of suspending the rules, signified by raising the right hand? The rules are now being suspended. This item is open for discussion. Would there be any discussion on this item? All in favor of adoption, signified by raising the right hand? And this item is adopted. That exhausts our agenda. But tonight, at this time, we have comments from persons present on any other items. Would you please come forward? Yes, sir.
David Lewis, I live at 776 Staple for Trail. I just want to, on behalf of the YMCA and all the people that have been working on the Field of Dreams, I want to thank y'all for your support of the item tonight, and I just want to publicly recognize Teresa Lee and Joel Duke. They both have been more than helpful and, and key parts of us putting together this project, and I want to thank them for their help, and all the city employees that have helped us. This field wouldn't be a reality without the support that y'all give us. And mayor, let's be thankful for your support and all the help. And I, I hope that we can have each one of you be with us tomorrow for our groundbreaking, and then hopefully in, in late September for our ribbon cutting for the Field of Dreams. And I just want to thank you again for all your support.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else would like to discuss tonight, please come forward, sir.
Okay, my name is Robert Bishop, and I applied for a job with the city and everything. And my thing about it was about having to have high school diplomas or GEDs for it. If you have qualification for a job, and they're needing people, trying to, you know, get on, and there's any way to try to get around having that deal. That's what I'd like to try to, you know, find out. But I did some college stuff back in 1989 to get into truck driving, which is a field I was wanting to do and all, and I had a certificate, you know, showing that there was not no high school diploma or GED.
Mr. Bishop, what job did you apply for, again?
For heavy equipment operators for sanitation.
Sanitation.
Yes, sir.
Sir, as far as I know, that there are rules in the HR department that they must go by right now. The only thing that I can recommend that maybe the sanitation department would, again, there's a committee of three up here.
Yes.
Will take a look at it and, and maybe get with HR, but right now, those rules are in place. We will refer it, though, to sanitation department and have them look at it, and if, 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 if it needs to be changed, it would have to go to our human resources department. But we thank you for bringing it to our attention, sir.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else? Mayor, you have any closing comments?
Well, hopefully at our next council meeting, I think there might be a new fire truck parked outside. You know, this council approved the funding on that, and so should have a new piece of equipment here very, very shortly. But also, in closing, I would like to thank all of our department heads and our city employees, because they, they are the ones who really make the things happen out there for this community. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Striplin?
Yes, sir.
Councilor Brown?
Yes, sir.
Councilor Sterns?
Yes, sir.
Councilor Chalmers?
Yes, sir.
Councilor Bowles?
Yes, sir.
Councilor Boone?
Yes, sir.
At this time, ladies and gentlemen, we will be taking a vote to go into executive session. We will come back, and the only thing left after executive session will be to adjourn. So everyone will be able to leave and go, and we will go into executive session. Do we have a motion to go into executive session?
Motion.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor, signified by raising the right hand? We will be retiring to executive session approximately one hour, and we will return after that to adjourn. The city clerk showed that the council returned at 7:32 from executive session. We need a motion to adjourn from executive session.
Motion.
We have a second?
Second.
We have adjourned from executive session, and this meeting is now adjourned.